Guys, thank you so much for being here. We have already opened up with prayer and the pledge tonight. Uh, we're gonna go directly into our um, special call meeting tonight. For our uh, I'm sorry. For our agenda, um, I'm sorry, for our budget tonight. Mr. Sims, are you there tonight?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, we can, we did, we already opened up, um, now we getting ready to turn it in the hands of you guys. I don't know, are you presenting or you want Brittany to present?
Alright, Brittany will provide us the rest of the two of them then.
Thank you. Um, Brittany.
This is the slideshow from last week and I'm not gonna really take the time to go over the whole presentation again because that did take, it'll take a chunk of our time. But I wanted to just scroll over to, over again, one more time. Um, so these were the ma- major changes to the last proposed budget. We removed the one million dollar transfer to capital improvement fund. We reduced the transfer to workers compensation fund by five hundred thousand. We reduced the contingency by two hundred and fifty thousand. And we reduced the contingency for new positions by sixty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. And then we increased our loss collections by five hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and forty-four. So the overall budget impact, our total budget was reduced by one million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and thirty. And that was a property tax reduction of two million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four. And this supports the rollback mill rate of nine point four-five-four. And the increase in loss collection is what offset the impact to the property taxes. So that's the main slide I really want, because like I said, with only thirty minutes, I don't want to dive too deep into that.
Well, um, I'm just gonna go right to it. Uh, Patrick, are you with us tonight?
I'm here, yes.
Uh, thank you, sir. I want to go ahead and try to clean up this language for appropriations because that's, uh, several of commissioners have, um, concerns about that. You want to talk about that?
Yes, sir. So at the last budget presentation, the board discussed the appropriations. And if you all recall, the budget that was presented at the last budget presentation had very limited appropriations to each of the nonprofit entities. Based upon the resolution that the board had adopted limiting those appropriations to twenty-five hundred dollars. There was a substantial discussion about the impact of that on those organizations. And there was discussion from the board about restoring all of the appropriate appropriations back to their previous year's level. Subject to two provisions that board members suggested, and I'm not saying that the entire board agreed to these. But these were, these were two suggestions that were made. So we wanted to include those in there to give the board a chance to vote on them, either approve or reject them. And if you look on your appropriations resolution, under section number two, which is page two, section number two.
Just the new one, yeah.
The resolution reads as follows. The Newton County Board of Commissioners hereby approve budget appropriations for fiscal year 2023 to the aforementioned entities providing community-wide services to the cities of Newton County. Provided however, that no funds shall be distributed to any such nonprofit entity until, A, the entity executes a memorandum of understanding with the county to perform its community-wide services. And B, the entity provides to Newton County a full and complete audit of its financial records, including income, expenses, and distributions for the years 2019, 2020, and 2031. Section A of that document requiring the memorandum of understanding, that's something that's really gonna be required for the non-governmental entities. We, we are required to, as you all are aware, we're prohibited from simply granting gratuity. We can't give gifts. When we transfer money to a governmental entity such as the Board of Health, the library system, of viewpoint health, they're even a government entity, to D-Fats, to the C-I-D, those are, those are basically intergovernmental transfers. But when we transfer money to a purely private organization, we need to support that with an agreement. And what that agreement will basically say is that those organizations and entities are performing a service on our behalf. And we're paying for them for that. And that was done in the original year of the appropriations. Um, and we'll essentially repeat those. We may clean those agreements up a little bit, but they'll be, they'll be very simple. They'll, they'll simply say that in exchange for the appropriation they received, they will perform the following services. And they will tell us what their services are. We're not gonna tell them. They're gonna tell us the nature of the services they provide. So that's what the revision is for your consideration. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan.
Patrick, um, could you make it clear in that paragraph two that the appropriations will remain the same? Uh, subject to those two new requirements, but the appropriations for this year will remain the same?
Yeah, we can do that. I, I think that's actually covered in the actual budget document itself. But we can certainly add a provision in number two that would say, the Newton County Board of Commissioners hereby approves budget appropriations for fiscal year 2023 to the aforementioned entities providing community-wide services to the city of, citizens of Newton County in the same amounts as were appropriated in fiscal year 2022.
That's, that's fine, I mean, yes. Yeah. Predicated on the things that follows. Uh, predicated on the things that he, that he.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the other two items, um, I guess I, it's gonna give, it would give them some time. What we need to change the, when is the effective date of this? Is this gonna be right away or is this gonna be a year from now?
I mean, right away?
I, I'm asking the question to the lawyer, hang on a second.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
And my reasoning for that is, um, you're gonna ask people to put together a lot of stuff over a three-year period. Um, and we're gonna give them the same amount of money anyway. So it's really, it really seems reasonable to allow them some time to get their books together because July first is when the appropriations are generally made.
But I think they had to give a, um, they had to give a financials to, when they come and present to the board already.
But they didn't this time, did they?
Yeah.
They did? Okay, I wasn't here at that particular meeting. But they didn't give them, they didn't give three-year report, did they?
No, I'm saying they've been doing it for, ever since I've been, they've been doing it for six years.
Okay. Well, I'm asking Patrick, what is, what is reasonable since we're, Patrick, is it reasonable since we're asking for the appropriation to be done at the same level for the whole year? Should those, uh, requirements be postponed at some point in the future? Or should they be asked for right away?
Uh, I, I'd, look, I believe you're giving taxpayer money to private entities. I believe it is absolutely appropriate that you expect them to show you where those funds are going. And to show them where their funds, those funds are going before you give them any more money.
Okay.
If, if the board wants to, if the board wants to relax that requirement and, and, you know, go ahead and grant the, the appropriation, but provide them, you know, six months or something to produce the audits. I, I, I don't have a particular problem with that. The, the problem, the issue is if those audits reveal problematic expenditures or problematic uh, fiscal controls or problematic issues, there's not, there's nothing you can do about it. The money's gonna be gone. Um, and, and you know, keep in mind, what you're doing today is you're merely budgeting. You're budgeting money today. You're not extending the money today. So all you're doing is setting aside these funds for these organizations until they do these things. It's no different than any other line item in your budget. You're budgeting for, you know, a lot of stuff. You're not writing checks today. You're, you're issuing, you're just simply authorizing the budget.
Okay, so what I'm hearing then, it's reasonable for you to, for us to say, uh, we'll keep the appropriation the same as last year, but we're gonna add in these two requirements right now. And prior to a dispersment of the money, we have to have, they have to jump through these two hoops, right?
That's right. And that's what this says. It's no funds shall be distributed until they satisfy both of those two.
Okay.
Commissioner Sanders and Commissioner Mason.
So I just want to get a complete understanding. If these nonprofits had to present their budgets and their information every time they actually came up here, so why are we asking for three years again? Because what I just heard that they, every time they present, they have to provide their budget and all their information. So why are we asking them to present 2019, 2020, 2021 when they were on appropriation with us during those years and we should have that on file?
So they, so what they provide is a list of, um, how they utilize the money. They don't do a complete audit as what the board is asking them to do. But they do give a rundown on what, what they utilize the county funds for, that they get, that they receive from the county as appropriations.
So in this complete audit, are we at, just to get clarification, we're asking for their budget and their, what else, Patrick? Uh, we're asking.
The resolution I drafted calls for.
Financial records, including income.
That is going to require them to have an accountant review their, their financial records, review their, uh, they won't necessarily have profit and loss statements, but they'll have things similar profit and loss statements. It'll have an accountant review their financial protocols. It'll have an accountant review their, you know, to confirm that all of their income is accounted for and that all their expenses are accounted for. And that they have, um, you know, appropriate records to support all of their income and all their, their expenses. And the audit is a lot more than just a budget.
So I'm thinking this should be done for every nonprofit, whether in a governmental or not, to be able to provide this information. So we have this on file so they can make sure that they're spending the monies appropriately. I think this should be for everyone, not just certain nonprofits. So maybe we need to amend this, uh, the informa- the actual language to say it should be for every nonprofit, whether they're in a governmental or whatever, because they are receiving tax dollars. So we, I, I know I, I, I'm a taxpayer. I would like to see what they're doing as well. This should be for every, every nonprofit that we're giving money to, to be able to see their financials. And it should be on file and open records to the public. Ooh, oh wow. Jesus. To the public. My second question, I remember Brittany, I sent the email in regards to, and I didn't see it on here, maybe it was removed, that you guys were allocating two million dollars of the ARPA fund money into the budget. And I asked what was that money gonna be used for and you didn't have an explanation of what projects? And I know from the BOC, the board voted that anytime the ARPA dollars are utilized, it has to come before the board first. So I was wondering how we co-mingling that. That should go before the board of commissioners to decide where those funds are going because there's nothing mentioned to where that two million dollars is going.
So the, the way I explained that, um, in the email was the fact that we do have to have a balanced budget. So the way that the ARPA funding works is when we receive the money, it goes into an account called deferred revenue. Um, so then once the money is allocated, it go, it moves into revenue. So the plan is, is once, you know, the board approves the projects, then we'll move it from deferred revenue into revenue. And so that was just literally an estimate, just to get, because we, legally, we have to have a budget for every fund. And so that was just an estimate. And then once y'all actually approve projects is when we'll amend the budget.
Just, this is my, when the board has the final decision, I would like to see that removed and brought before the board individually because it is ARPA funds and it's federal dollars. So if we don't have anything listed as what projects right now where it's going, that should go before the ARPA committee as y'all, the board voted for, and then to the board to actually vote. Because we're putting money that's supposed to be utilized for American Rescue and we don't have anything next to it where it's going. That's two million dollars. So when, there needs to be something that says this money is going somewhere and it needs to go before the board, before it's actually distributed to the budget.
Um, Mr. Jarvis? Uh, go ahead Jarvis.
So Commissioner Sanders, as Brittany indicated, that was just for, that is for budgeting. It's for the wording of co-mingling, uh, our accounting department, Brittany actually knows what's, what's happening. So it's not anything improper what she's doing or suggesting. It's just when we have those projects that relates to ARP, we have to have an accounting as far as expenses and revenue and that's how it's budgeted. But there's nothing improper what she's doing.
Yeah.
Other counties or cities probably doing exactly the same thing, the same way.
That might be okay, but I, I'm going based on what the board voted. They said that any of the ARPA dollars or projects go before the board to decide where those fundings are going. So if we're putting it inside the budget right now and there's nothing attached to it where the funding is going, then we won't have any say so because we already voted on it collectively with the budget. Unless you're bringing those projects before us to vote individually. That's why, that's why I was asking in the email and I never got a straight answer.
We would never expend any of the funds until it comes to the board for approval. Like I said, this is just strictly an estimate of what we think that y'all may spend next year. But this funds will never be allocated anywhere unless they're approved by the board. It's the same thing we do for the SPOLOST every year too. The SPOLOST budgets are always just an estimate too, based on the projects that we think that may be started or in the process for the, the following year.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was on record.
Um, Commissioner Edwards, guys, we got a, we got a hard stopping point at seven o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that, that money, Brittany, has not been per se transferred into a county fund yet, right?
Um, that, I mean, it all lies in the ARPA funds.
Twenty-twenty-three budgeted fund, right?
Yeah, it's all lying in the ARPA, ARPA account.
So it's just a placeholder on this piece of paper for the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Um, uh, thank you.
So, alright, so my next question was on item B, number two, item B, the entity provides Newton County a full, complete, and satisfactory audit by a auditing firm or CPA firm? Jarvis?
Yes, uh, that would be for the nonprofits, yes, that would be for CPA for, uh, firm or some formalized audit uh, for those, uh, nonprofits.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Along those same lines, um, Mr. Sims, is that CPA firm um, going to be someone that is hired by the county? Or does each individual nonprofit have to go out and select their own individual CPA firm to do that audit?
That's correct. That would be hired by the, the nonprofit. That would be a county expense.
So they'll go out and, and select their own individual CPA firm, um, to actually do that audit?
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner, um, Henderson.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, and, and I personally, I think that's, that's, that is a great idea. You know, and, um, uh, to Patrick and to Jarvis, uh, that's a really great idea. But I think we need to extend it more than just for the nonprofit. I think we need to go out and au- audit Gates' plantation and other county entities that receive county funding. And so that the taxpayers can look at what is they're taking in and how they're taking in. So you just put what, what I say with a press of a burden, so they'll know. Second thing I just want to share with you, in 2016, I raised a question about co-mingling funds. It was the SPOLOST funding and then what's the impact fee of funding? And for two or three years, people kind of lied to me and said, well, this wasn't co-mingle. We, we, no co-mingling, nobody did it. And then I think when Brittany, I think a little before Commissioner Sanders came on, uh, we was in a budget meeting and he said, well, you know, the, uh, impact fee money had just been paid back, either impact fee or SPOLOST money. And the question I asked Lord at the time was, who authorized it? Nobody. And I never got an answer. And then the kind of crazy emails I got said, well, the time limit was up whatsoever. And so there has been a time that funds have been co-mingled. And, and I guess the county held paid it back. And I knew that, uh, from what they told me, that there was, uh, you know, it was against the law to do that. But I guess, I guess at some point and sometime in government, the laws may not mean too much. But I think we should, there should be in a separate fund, as all funding. Uh, that was why, you know, uh, it was like we did double fund because I learned from prior experiences that when you put two different funds in the same account, that you might not know which come, what come from what. And, um, you know, it's my understanding also, and maybe Miss Brittany, since I'm, I'm sure you're familiar with what I'm talking about. I think it ran four or five million dollars that had been co-mingled. So, um, you know, I, I, I think that we should keep an eye on and know, at, at least the taxpayers and the commissioners should know where our money's at and the fact that it has been co-mingled here. And that we should be more cautious. And, and, and the reason why I had brought that up then, I'm gonna get through, Mr. Chairman, the reason I brought it up then because I was a foreign believer that, that we needed to know so that hopefully it never happens again. Because I'm a foreign believer that history repeats itself. And all time, you know, and there's so many, there's so much that goes around this horseshoe. And with, uh, the people who worked for us, and sometimes people authorize the stuff that the board don't even approve. And I never did get a straight answer, but I knew it was paid back. So they said, but how do we prevent that from happening again?
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sanders, guys, after this, I'm calling for the vote. You've got your question. Okay, I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, are we voting on, uh, item E?
We are.
Wish to approve resolution R-062822.
Thank you. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion?
Resolution.
Resolution. Uh, Commissioner Cowan.
Can I change that and just add in there, subject to the revisions that Patrick is gonna put in?
Yes, that's the new resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. That's the new resolution. Guys, let me make note of that. Let me make note of that, seriously.
Should I restate?
Yeah, we need to restate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to make a motion, we approve resolution R-062822. Subject to R-0, approval of the, of R-06.
Subject to the changes that was stated by the county attorney.
Subject to the changes as stated by the county attorney.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, it's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Now any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. C. Um, to the clerk, we want to be sure that this, that this in the, I guess, the minutes or in the, whatever.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. It passed, um, five-zero. Um, next is item F. I seek a motion, please. Thank you. Yep. No, no. F. Uh-uh. No, this is.
Item F is what we just voted on?
Yeah. No, we just voted on, um, we just voted on E. Yeah, we just voted on E. Now we're voting on F. F is appropriations. Uh, once you state this motion, please state that you approve based on, um, the edits that was stated by the county attorney also. I seek a motion.
Okay. We were talking about this one.
Yes.
Two, uh, two-eight-eight-two-two-A.
Yes.
Okay, that's the one we were talking about. And that's the one I thought we just voted on.
We just voted on the budget.
We ain't discussed that yet. As a resolution, as a resolution to adopt the budget, but there's some language in there I would like to discuss with the county attorney. Y'all went out of order.
Wait, no, he. E as the resolution.
The county had not even discussed item E yet. We discussed item F. But that's what Brittany went over first. Is that correct, Stan?
That's what Brittany just went over.
Oh, wait, let me just ask Stan.
He made a, he made a, he asked for a motion for item E.
I know, but I think he meant item F because that's the one we've been discussing.
They're both resolutions.
Yeah.
I know, but there's some language in the.
So let me, let me clear it up. Let me. So let, let me clear it up. Commissioner Edwards, which one did you make a motion on?
I made a motion on item E.
Thank you, sir. And now we're on item F. Yes. Guys, we, we, we voted on it. I mean, if you wanna, if you want. You can. You can. You can. But now we're on item F. We're on item F, which is, we're on item F. Brittany went, Brittany went over the, Brittany went over the budget. Guys, y'all had an, y'all, huh?
She went over the budget and the changes.
And the changes.
On the resolution about the changes for the two items that he added to that, which was item E.
To the budget.
To the resolution. The resolution.
So listen.
I guess I'm just confused what we voted on. We voted on the budget.
We voted on the budget, sir.
Okay.
So Commissioner Cowan, are you saying that you were sending your vote?
No, I'm gonna vote for the budget.
Well, guys.
It's just, I just don't think that is what we, I, I'd like to talk about that resolution though first.
So, I mean, the, the motion passed. The motion passed unless you want to, unless y'all want to vote to read. But we're gonna move on to item F.
Okay.
Item F. Item F is the appropriations. Guys, I seek a motion on the appropriations.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve resolution R-062822A, which is a resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners approving fiscal year 2023 appropriations to entities conferring substantial benefits to citizens of Newton County.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passed, um, it, it passed three, one, with one extension. Thank you so much. Go ahead, Commissioner. Guys, we got to get out of here. We, 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 we.
I understand you made a vote and you made an extension. You got to discuss it, Mr. C. You have to have a discussion on it regardless of how long it may take.
No, guys, we, I'm gonna call for adjournment because we got a.
I mean, you can do that if you will.
Yeah, they got a public, they got a public hearing that has to start at seven.
If you will. The reason, the reason why I abstained was because when Stan made the motion, it was not clear to me that we were voting in terms of the budget, and I did not like the budget, and I didn't want to vote on, on the budget. And so, this is the reason why I stand on this one, because I think it's not the, it's not being clearly presented to, to our fellow commissioners. So the question that I have for Patrick is that, what is the, do you have to wait another week in order to rescind your vote? Because I know with the, with the Juneteenth money, wait the following week, or can you rescind your vote at this meeting? Hear me, Patrick?
I'm sorry, I could not, I could not understand that question.
Yes, sir. I want to rescind my vote on the budget. Can you hear me now? Patrick, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay. I want to rescind my vote on the budget, and I knew that when they rescind their vote on the Juneteenth money, that they came back two weeks later and rescinded their vote. Can their vote, or can my vote be rescinded at this meeting?
You could make a motion to rescind the previous vote. That, that's a motion that's permitted, yes.
Okay. You haven't said that, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to rescind the votes on the budget that we just had.
Guys, we, now, we, Patrick, we stand in adjourned, because it is 7:02.
Can we adjourn, and we just had made a motion to rescind, as you had said it, and you were the county attorney, Patrick?
It is 7:02, and it is, I mean, the meeting has been advertised to start at seven o'clock.
I'm asking a legal question, Patrick.
You know what? I'll tell you what. You, you got a second? He made, Commissioner Henderson made a motion to rescind the vote for his, for the budget. You got a second? Okay. All in favor to rescind their votes? Yeah, that's, yeah. All in favor to rescind their votes? No, he, he said all the votes. All in favor to rescind the votes. All opposed? Thank you. Okay, I seek a motion that we stand adjourned. It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards, second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor. Guys, we stand adjourned.